Can't hear anything.
He called me in that.
Thank you.
Robert, I'm gonna have you on speaker on my.
I'm trying to dabble into it, just haven't had any luck yet. I can keep trying.
It's all right. Well, well, we'll go from this. Hey, everybody is six o'clock, six oh one P M. This is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me at recite. Thank you very much. Members present include myself, Chair Jacob Pride, H T R Robert Loveenheim is on the phone with us, Supervisor Michael Albers here, Township Manager Julia Heilica, Admin Coordinator Diana Salvi, Engineer John Tressler, Solicitor Ron Karasak is present via Zoom. There was a standing executive session this evening from five thirty eight P M. To five fifty three P M. With regard to the real property at Minneson Park and a lease we have there. And the Rivers Edge Bike Park surveys reopened. I don't know off the top of my head the date that it closes, but we're discussing the survey results at the next meeting on that March twenty sixth at six P M.
I believe it's open until February twenty eighth.
Okay, perfect. So we'll make sure that's posted around be in our newsletter coming out tomorrow. First order of business at the minutes of the November twelfth, general regular business meeting in the November fourteenth joint session. Do I hear a motion on those?
Motion to approve events.
Motion by Mr. Albert. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Lovinghager. Questions? All in favor? Bills and obligations. We have bills totaling two hundred forty three thousand one hundred sixty eight dollars and fifty four cents. That includes one hundred and sixty eight thousand four hundred thirty three dollars and twenty three cents paid January sixth. And today's total of seventy four thousand seven hundred thirty five dollars thirty one cents. These are from the General Fund, Capital Improvement, Rent Fund, the M S Tax Fund, and the Fire Tax Fund, the last distributions um from twenty twenty four. Do I hear a motion on the bills?
I want motion to approve.
You should approve first second.
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, second by Mr. Albert. Questions?
Yeah, what is five star? Equipment for eight thousand.
Uh, that was one of the um brush attachments that you put in the capital improvement plan uh in the budget through twenty twenty five. I believe originally scheduled like eleven or twelve thousand dollars for it in the budget. It came in a little bit under.
That goes it goes on the general fund even when it's.
Uh, because we have a because we have a count with five star, uh it we paid it through the general fund and then we use capital in business to reimburse the general fund.
Okay, so I didn't see that. Is that that show up as a adjournal entries because it's not an expense?
Yeah, it would be a transfer between funds. Um, I believe I approved that either early this morning or yesterday.
Okay, so.
So it has occurred.
Okay. There was one more. So there was a and then um now there's the one I was I thought it was the Napa Auto Parts, but it's the retirement, so. Oh, no, the the civil group Riverside, is that is that H R related? Riverside. It's totaling it's three bills totaling sixteen thousand.
The page.
Last page. Sophie Group, sorry.
Oh, um, that is a um, that's a D P W expense. Sophie Group. Um, they have like four different names, so we put them in like that. Um, but they have our contact. Uh, I believe it's for uh, sorry, it's for salt. They do salt and slag.
Okay. A lot of salts.
Yes, salt, salt, roll up. That was to do with this one.
Okay.
Quick question. There are people trying to log in on Zoom and the password they're saying isn't working. Seven three three. They're saying they tried one seven four two. Do you think in there? Uh, seven three three.
Any other questions on the bills?
I do. Um, it says here for the Minneson Park light. The new light that you guys put up. Um, for the dusk to dawn park. It's gonna cost thirty three dollars and forty two cents a month. That's like four hundred dollars a year for a light that's used where there's nothing around it.
Uh, so I spoke with our D P W Director regarding this. Um, and he said that it was important to have a lighted area over there where our guys can stop if they have any issues. Um, and so like when the board talked about it before, they said security features. Um, you will see that go down because it's a dusk to dawn light. Right now it's obviously darker for longer. And as the summer progresses, we should see those costs shrink.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. We will proceed to the Solicitor's report. Ron.
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the report will deal basically with what's occurred through the month of December. I've not yet been able to prepare documents with respect to January since we're still in January, although very close to the end of it. Uh, in December, I attended the five meetings. One of them dealt with a Zoom meeting for forty two right to no requests that were sent to the township regarding Prices Landing Road, the bike park, and the disc golf course. That was a Zoom meeting with our Township Manager and also the alternate Township Engineer, Ms. Hutchison. The other meetings dealt with the two regular business meetings of the Township Board of Supervisors. The regular business meeting of the Township Planning Commission. And then there was a joint meeting of the Township Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission to review signage ordinance. As to the subdivision matters, there are a number that are pending. One deals with the Water Gap Wellness Recreation Center. There is also one dealing with the Healthy Minds Site Layout Plan. Also one dealing with the Shukita State Preliminary Final Minor Subdivision Plan. Those are all in various stages of review and approval with respect to township engineer reviews and or supplemental documents. I also prepared the release indemnification and hold harmless agreement for the eleven oh eight Hillside Drive property with respect to their sewage isolation distance. And then we have the four lawsuits that are pending with respect to the Manor Land Use Appeal. Uh, that process is now an appeal to the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. And that's just beginning its stages with respect to that. Uh, the trial court asked that both the township and Mountain Manor file its statements of matters complained of basically what the issues are that they see in the case. And uh the township has filed its concise statement of matters complained of. In this regard, the township's involved in that mix because I have filed a cross appeal on behalf of the township in that case with respect to the trial court's decision as to a continuing nonconforming ongoing resort use. Uh, as to the Mountain Manor injunction case. That matter had been scheduled for a hearing on the motion for recusal that was filed by Mountain Manor. That motion has since been withdrawn. So the next development in that case will be the hearing on the motion for contempt that the township filed when Mountain Manor operated in what the township uh believes was in defiance of the court order of the injunction. As to the Carroll Land Use Appeal. Uh, again, Ms. Carroll's attorney filed a concise statement of matters complained of again, basically outlining what are the issues to be uh briefed or argued on appeal. And that case again is through now the initial processes of the Commonwealth Court, so. Uh, that pretty much takes us through what occurred through the month of January. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that should pretty much take care of it on my end.
Robert, Michael, anything to ask Ron?
I don't. I saw a couple of confused looks. Does everyone understand? Yeah, but maybe your last question, feel free to ask.
Yeah, and I'll I'll explain whatever might be confusing because this stuff is not that easy to grasp or read.
Hi, Ron. It's Christine.
Yes.
Um, so the um the Mountain Manor issue with the nonconforming use, can you explain to me a little bit about that? Can you go a little more into detail with that, please?
When Mountain Manor filed its appeal in the land use case now. Because the land use case was that the town the Township Zoning Hearing Board denied their request for the motocross track. Uh, and when the court made that decision, it basically made a split decision in that it said that Mountain Manor has a continuing nonconforming prior existing use of a resort. They continue to have that. However, a motocross track is not part of a resort use. It's not part of resort recreation. So the township won on that issue, but then, of course, lost, if you will, on the issue of a continuing resort use. There was some concern that not appealing the decision regarding the continuing resort use could open up the township to further uses that maybe not be something that would be liked by way of a go kart racing or who knows what. So I was instructed to take that appeal and see if the Commonwealth Court, the higher court would reverse the decision of the trial court regarding the ongoing resort use uh that is in existence.
Perhaps I'm misremembering, but I thought at the zoning hearing board that it was argued, I believe by by you, that it had fallen out of resort use.
Correct.
And that that no longer that that resort use, nonconforming or not, I'm adding that had. Had. It had expired.
Correct. Yeah, our statute allows uh a court to determine. That a use has been abandoned if it has not been used for twelve months. And I had prepared a um. A timeline of how the uses over the years from Mountain Ha- uh, Mountain Manor stopped when the. Thunder Creek place stopped, when there was the fire, when there was. Uh, other things, so showing that there was no use, in my opinion. Until, well, not use at all, so it should have expired. The court, however, said, no, they're still. Running out places, they're still letting some people do hikes and other kinds of recreational activities. So they really did not abandon that use. It still applies, however, it just doesn't apply to a motocross track.
That's what we've appealed.
Right, okay.
That's what we've appealed, right.
And so then how is the upcoming special use exception? How will that protect the township from? From. Back nine. Um, litigation or issues or?
The, yeah, the new zoning ordinance amendment will not. Apply to back nine because that is being filed after that application came in. What the court did there, basically, the court said, look, doesn't even need to be a special exception. There are ordinance sections that say there are certain things that are completely prohibited in the township. Uh, things that annoy neighbors, thing that disturb the quiet enjoyment of property, things that cause uh harm or. Ill effects, and the court said, so it didn't matter whether there was a special exception or not in this case. Because that ordinance would trump. Uh, special exception and say that this motocross can't occur because it's again disturbing neighbors, causing a. The, a, a property disturbance within the neighborhood, et cetera. But had the court not said that. We could have had an issue with that, but we were able to dodge that bullet. And rather than have to worry about it the next go around. The decision was made to adopt a special exception use. Ordinance, it's there.
What, what? What would the potential issue have possibly looked like? Like, how, how would that have?
Issue would have been that you have nothing in your ordinance to determine. How to figure out a special exception use. If anyone looks at your ordinance, they can't say what we need to do. How big is the property supposed to be? What kind of water control should we have? What kind of sewer control should be there? What kind of setbacks and other requirements are needed? What type of lighting, what type of? Other controls by way of security, et cetera. You have nothing in your ordinance, Mr. Karasak, to say any of that. So you lose and they get their special exception. Because remember, a special exception isn't special and it's not an exception. It's just a term. Special exception means that it is a permitted right under certain special conditions.
Alright, thank you, Ron. You go to the engineers' report?
Thank you, Jacob. Uh, some of the activities since we last met. Uh, as Ron suggested, our office met on the conference call for right to know request. Uh, we attended a Zoom meeting with PennDOT regarding. Uh, replacement of the Gapview Drive Bridge. We had another uh meeting with PennDOT representatives for Green Mountain Drive Bridge repairs. Continue to perform inspection at Wawa. Uh, we're in the process of reviewing or approving, recommending approval of various subdivision. Reviews. Uh, we did make uh an inspection on Todd Scap Road regarding a report that driveways comes. Out there for Healthy Minds. We determined that four driveways uh appear to access Todd Scap Road and we will be. Asking that their use be documented in their current. Land development plans as before the township. So that's. What I report.
Can you, I, I'm confused by that. They're already there, but they're not on the map?
That is correct.
Does that mean they shouldn't be there or?
I don't know. I don't know if they have a permit. Um. I don't know anything at this point. They've been there for a long time. They're not brand new.
Okay.
Uh, I believe two of them have chains across, but the other two do not. Uh, so we have to ask the applicant. More about those driveways, if they intend to use them, if they intend to close them. Uh, I believe the board has. Within its jurisdiction can put restrictions on their use.
Right.
We're, we're just starting the process, having learned about them.
Where are they, John?
When you ask where are they, they're sort of evenly spaced on Todd Scap Road.
On the, on the golf course side?
Yes.
Okay.
They're like gravel.
Yes, yeah, one.
Are they paths or they?
One, the golf cart path?
One appears to be a golf cart path. Uh, it appears like it was paved at one time.
Is that by my house, right by the corner of my house?
I wasn't there personally. I was only judging from photographs that my inspector brought. Um. Well, I don't know where your house is and where it is relative to your house, or were no houses in the photograph.
Like two feet from my.
Well, a little bit farther than that because it didn't show up in the photograph, but yeah, I. I only reviewed the photographs and I gave. Direction to staff that we will. Find out more about these driveways.
Right.
And then that, because that is the first I've. Experienced something like this. You like give a report to the township for me? I like. These anomalies, is that how that happens?
No.
Does it go to zoning?
It'll come in, it'll come up in my review letter to the applicant. What I'm gonna do is. Tell the applicant in our review that we have. Noticed that there are four driveways. Uh, coming on to Todd Scap Road that have not been shown on this plan and the requirements of this. Plan is that they show all features.
And it has to be consistent with the conditional use granted.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
If, uh, I don't know if you, you want a little insight from me?
Sure, that's how we learned about this.
I, I think. I think I can tell you what they are, but. I don't know if you're gonna do that privately or?
Well, you attend all the meetings, we'll see what the applicant has to tell us what they are. And if you disagree, we can, we can discuss it.
Fair enough, okay.
Thank you. Billy, anything you wanna know?
Uh, two quick things to follow up on the uh meeting that we had with PennDOT regarding the Gapview Drive Bridge. Uh, just a heads up, this is all tentative, uh, and PennDOT. May change their mind, but they're looking currently at a full replacement. Starting in construction season of May of, of uh, May for twenty twenty-eight. That might get pushed back, might get pushed forward, we don't know, we're still very much in preliminary. Just a heads up. Um, second thing, we finally did get our financial statements for twenty twenty-three from our auditors. They are up on our website and you'll see the advertisement. In the Pokonan Record on, on the thirtieth of January.
Great.
What was that for again, Julie? I'm sorry. The, the financial statements for twenty twenty-three, they're on the website and you'll see the uh advertisement that we're required to post on the Pokonan Record. Cool, on January thirtieth.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd quick question, maybe come to the supervisor's comments, but do you wanna share a little bit about the onboarding of our new zoning? Sorry, I didn't tell you I was gonna ask you to do this, but maybe just like very briefly, because you've had a bunch of meetings.
Yeah, uh, I, we, both Diana and myself have met extensively with Bureau Veritas, our main point of contact there. His name is Matthew Hovers. Um, we have personally dug through, I think, eight or nine banker's boxes worth of stuff at this point. Um, and we are still very much digging, hoping to digitize and moving forward. Um. As of the first day, uh, if I may share some statistics, if I remember them correctly. Um, Matt had a hundred and forty-four voicemails that he had to deal with. As of the end of about twelve hours of work, he was down to a hundred and four. And we had caught up with every permit that we had proof existed in that um space. We're still playing a little bit of catch-up with email yet. We're still playing catch-up with voicemails, but he is working. Lightning fast and I could not be happier with his progress. He will be attending the uh. Planning Commission meeting in February to introduce himself, say hello, and uh. We spoke extensively about the zoning officer review for. Different ordinances and whatnot, so he'll be taking on a main role and you'll be getting something akin to what John gives you. For every ordinance review that has to do with zoning. So we're excited, we're really looking forward to moving forward and uh, we have a lot of paperwork to get.
And I, you told me maybe just briefly about. The informing, or did that happen before, informing of the county after a?
Oh.
Of constructions.
Yes, that happened after everything. We got a letter from the county that the town, that they had not received any permits from the township since December of twenty twenty-one. Um, so we are in the process right now, um, working with base engineering and. Uh, both Diane and I are digging through everything to get those permits on the books.
I mean, and it's relevant for the public to know because. Technically, the idea is when you get a building permit, you get a reassessment at the end of that.
Correct.
County does it, so none of that has happened in the last several years. And so I assume the county will. Go back, I mean, surely will. So anyone that's had, and I don't know whether they're gonna be allowed to back charge, I, that would be. I'd be surprised that they could, but they would certainly moving forward. So anyone that did a building construction the last four years might expect to have. Um, a reassessment.
Yes.
Current assessment's about six hundred eighty million, so it should go up some.
We're, we're.
But when was the last assessment? So the, the four.
Twenty, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, but.
We'll have to go through all. Yeah.
Um, yeah, the, the two that they were most concerned about that we have dug through and found the permits that they needed. Um, as they had no permits on record for the new building over on airstrip road, um, or the updates to the veterinary office.
For Vigan?
Yes, um, so that is rectified. They're moving forward to fix that and our office is taking. Immediate and, and fast measures to make sure.
You made the right decision on switching. Uh, I wanted to note that the public office hours are Thursdays from eight thirty to four thirty. Uh, he will be around more than that, but that's just the designated, you know, open office hour.
We have a lot of items to dig through and uh, we wanna make sure that we can get through that as quickly as we can to bring our office back up to speed.
And just because office hours are only one day.
Please feel free to email him and call him, yes.
Yeah, and also. Con- contractors and people can still come in and pick up the necessary forms if they wanna pay for copy. But it's just if they wanna have a conversation with the zoning officer, they have, they have to do it in person, in person.
Can you just tell me again? I'm hoping this isn't what I heard. So the building permits from just twenty twenty-one or twenty? Twenty-one on up?
Monroe County has not received.
Twenty twenty-one on up.
From the township since December of twenty twenty-one.
I thought just that, that from there to.
And which department receives them?
Um, it is, uh.
Uh, it's surprising on both sides. I mean, it's a surprise.
Say hey.
That they didn't. And we'll, and surprising that we never submitted it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Um, I, I wanna go back a minute, um. Ron and John both said that they are on a Zoom meeting. Reference to the forty-two rights to know.
Yes.
And Ms. Hutchinson, were those the only three involved?
I personally wasn't involved. I said my office was in a Zoom meeting referring to Ms. Suchus.
So you weren't involved, she was.
She was.
And Ron was. And anyone else? I'm sorry, was anyone else informed at that Zoom meeting for the forty-two rights now?
Um, the Zoom meeting only consisted of me, Missy and Ron. I'm sorry, the, the Zoom meeting was only me, Missy and Ron.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I must be behind. So I'm assuming Ken is house?
Yes.
And the new, but his name is?
Matthew Hovers.
Hovers.
It's a firm, we're using Bureau Veritas, that he is an employee of Bureau Veritas.
Okay, thank you. And their office is out of, uh. In each town.
Uh, so their, their east office is out of Toby Hannah, um, up in there, but he will be physically here. On Thursday, it's from eight thirty to four thirty. So he, he is in that back corner office.
Brett. Is there a level of service that Veritas is giving us? Um, that you're assessing back to what, what our need is for that office? Based on the, the personnel that can assign to the township to help? Um, are you, how are you managing the workload? Is, is just one person or they, they're, can they add on?
Uh, they do have another zoning officer. Uh, her name is Sandra. I don't remember her last name, but if Matthew is not available, we can fall back on her. Uh, they do also have administrative assistants that if they need something, um, we can use them as well. We're trying to not approve those costs. So Diana and I are doing a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to that. Um, Diana in particular is doing a lot of the admin for permits.
So you're in a, in an assessment period now, judging how much you need and how much they can provide.
Right, um, we're, we're still very much um going through the office, figuring out um where everything is and bringing the stuff back up to. Uh. Snuff, if you will. Um, you'll notice we've changed the style of the permits that we're issuing. So we're now moving forward. A, if the permit looks like this, it was issued by Bureau Veritas. Um, we're also in the process of creating new systems, um, just as we figure out how a new workload works with new personnel. Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, so I'm just curious. Do you have a number, how many projects that was that didn't get submitted to the county? Over the last three years?
Um, I know that the township submitted a hundred, or, uh, we have records of a hundred and sixty-nine zoning permits being issued in twenty twenty-four.
That's not necessarily building, though.
Yeah, that's not building, it's just zoning. Uh, I don't know the twenty twenty-three and twenty-two numbers off the top of my head. Um. Feasibly though, just roughly speaking, um, till the last time I ran numbers, the township was bouncing somewhere between. Uh, a hundred and two hundred permits a year, so if I roughly say roughly a hundred and fifty, we're looking at approximately. Four hundred and fifty permits that we need to pull and send.
Uh, I mean, that could be a. It's hard to say how much. Correct, yeah, whether it's built, whether it was finished, whether it was a deck that it says minimal impact.
Even if it's not complete, though, when those permits get issued for that work, those permits get turned over to the county, so it's on their radar, if you will.
Yeah, and you usually have, you know, some cases, five years to build what you're going to do, so you might not actually have the effect until.
And the, and usually I don't think the reassessment happens until it's formally finished, right, so.
Correct, there's two interim runs that the county does. A year.
So it could be, it could be a substantial amount of money that you, that you don't need to count.
Easily, all of us. Township school district too.
Right, yeah, uh, it could be significant in the school district. I don't know how significant.
Yeah.
Knowing the numbers.
Hamilton.
Hamilton.
Yep. Okay, um, there's nothing tonight for the environmental advisory council because their reorganization meeting got moved to the eighteenth, so that's. Moving eighteenth here at seven. Um, we'll proceed to the I eighty and six eleven update from Tara.
Good evening, Tara Mazanati, your. PennDOT and NJDOT I eighty and six eleven liaison. Um. So in the past two weeks or three weeks, uh, some information has come in. Um, I might be repeating a little bit, but I just wanna make sure it all stays organized. Regarding the I eighty. Rockfall mitigation project. We have a date coming up. From NJDOT where they will be releasing the visual impact, the updated visual impact assessment. Uh, that. Was originally released in two thousand seventeen, so we haven't seen the update, which will show. What the current proposed plan. For Mount Tammany's rockfall mitigation will look like. And it will reveal what they claim the impacts of that will be visually. So that should be out, I, I might be mixing up months, it's either um, April or May. In addition, what's gonna come out is what's called the Cultural Resources uh Survey. That was only released to consulting parties back in like two thousand fifteen. Nobody, no municipality at that time was on the consulting parties list. Because that was when the DOT was proceeding with this project as a cata- NIPA categorical exclusion. The lowest level of environmental review. Trying to get it to slip by with, um, without the eyes on it, that it was obviously deserving. I mention that because I'm now. Bringing this up to all municipalities that you will be getting an email. Uh, asking if you would like to be considered consulting party status. For that project, just like in your, in Smithfield's. Position, you already are that for the retaining wall project. Because through our collective advocacy, we got the NJ DOT to to kinda clean that up. And bring the right. Advocates advocates for visual impact and historic resources to the table. So that's gonna be coming out. I probably the last meeting I would have mentioned, this might be all sounding similar. Because I might have been mentioning that Penn Dot, I'm working with Penn Dot about the six eleven project. And they're accepting information from me. About what municipalities have expressed an interest to be a consulting party status for the six eleven project. Um so it's all gonna come in emails together. It's all this consulting party.
Different resolutions for each one.
No, just 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 you're, I'm making it so simple. We're we're so far along with the agencies at this point that it's gonna be a. You'll have instructions, Julia, to reply all.
Yeah.
Or to reply, and it will be going to Penn Dot where you will be as a municipality expressing an interest to be a consulting party. I'm providing the list. It's not my place to speak on your behalf. Um it's your job to say as a municipality, you want that, just like it's everybody else's. And there'll be similar instructions regarding the NJ DOT. The buildup to that is that means it's gonna be all hands on deck coming up with the I eighty six, uh the I eighty retaining wall. Project. Oh, so the retaining wall project is releasing the visual impact assessment update. Uh Julia and I think Michael, I think you also attended those meetings as well. They're releasing that update and the cultural resources update. In April or May. So one's April, the other's May, all I eighty. But that's a all hands on deck situation. It is, it is really the time to for the municipality to provide their opinion. On the matter. Residents don't have that opportunity. This is not a public comment period. This is um consulting parties have that opportunity. Uh Warren County will be taking the lead. Um as experts in the area of historic resource um and cultural resources and will be representing Warren County, I'm sure. I would like to thank Nolan and Hardwood will be coming behind that. We will be providing that to you. Um for the option to. Uh concur, pick anything out of it, develop your own letter, whatever you want, but it will be important that you express um the opinions of the municipality. Representing the residents and the businesses and the recreationists. So that's that one. Any questions on that?
It's pretty straightforward.
One more. Uh new topic. Uh the um what's it called? The Explore Act was signed into law in December. Uh you, uh there is, um I'm I'm mentioning that there's the No National Park Group. That is. Doing all they can to make sure. The recreation area does not become a new designation, which is a national park, and one of their arguments. Is increased visitors' use is increased um opportunity for our stretch thin emergency services. Because our local um. Emergency services are up on the mountain, down on the river, um not in our, not serving our residences and our businesses. They're watered down by serving the uh federal resources. The Explore Act, from my quick review.
Is that a federal act?
It is, it is. Um from my quick review, talks about gateway communities. And from my look, we are that. And when I say we, I mean all of us. That have emergency services or our infrastructure that's impacted in any way. By increased visitor use to recreation areas. It's referenced in that act. Um and there is a pilot, from what I read, there's a pilot, a requirement that uh at no less than ten. Locations nationally are chosen to be a pilot. To for to use whatever science they're gonna apply to measure the numbers of visitors and the actual quantify the actual impacts to the communities. Once again, we're watered down because we're three counties. Right? And two states. Whereas if all this was happening in one county, in one state, it would be easy and one congressman. It would be easy to get somebody's attention. So I chose to like put this under my hat. As it relates to impacts to I eighty and six eleven. It's the same emergency services people. That can't get where they need to get because of the traffic impacts on six eleven and eighty. So I chose to put that under my hat to mention it to everyone. I don't have the time and resources to drive it. So I don't want you to rely on me to be leading the charge on how to find our congressional representatives. To collaborate um. To find a way for us to be one of those pilots. My pers- my my feeling is we missed that opportunity to be a pilot. We've missed that opportunity and I I think we are a a good case to be that. So Ted, you're it.
Do you accept the mission?
Appreciate the heads up. I mean, certainly, I think we'll be wanting to meet with our new congressman in the the coming weeks. And um I know that Sandy has been pretty diligent about making sure the new folks are oriented to the issue.
Good. Just wanna make sure you're, you got it there for us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question.
So the Explore Act, so so these ten pilot programs nationally are for. Currently non-national park designated areas to become designated and then, okay.
Thank you for asking. No, thank you for asking. Um uh there uh I only. Chose to mention the No National Park Movement because it's talking about impacts. To communities regarding visitor use. Um so I just wanted to. Uh use that because we understand that kinda language. Um so no, this is uh. If anything, what this act appears to do, or this portion of the act, I have to say, there's a lot more to it. It talks about trails and other things, but this gateway community piece, um visitor use impact. Seems like it falls right on us. Um. So uh it seemed, if there's a possibility, it was written, it appears to maybe be written. By people who are proponents of the National Park Movement because it, to me, it resolves. Potential impact issues.
It allows for some sort of federal funding to gateway communities.
It doesn't um authorize the funding.
Right, cause it still has to be.
Appropriated.
Appropriate.
Right, so what?
It allows a mechanism to explore it though.
It right, and it requires, the act requires the exploration of these things. It requires ten pilot programs. So that if we were.
We got a lot from it, I don't.
So the way I see this working is if we wind up getting this voice behind this, it turns into our Congress congressional representatives. Um putting and attaching appropriations to a bill for the purpose of. A pilot program for our our region. That.
It does, and is it to specifically benefit local EMS?
Us uh impact visitor use impacts to gateway communities.
But is it for, I don't, I I I've seen that it was out there, but um I didn't definitely didn't read it. Um do you know if it's for only national park gateways or national, cause.
Uh it's specifically, the language in there, um it's referencing national recreation.
Oh, recreation areas as well, okay. That's good.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a statement. It's my understanding, in addition to that, it's to access public land. I mean, that, you know, that land. And then assess that accordingly and then see if infrastructure would be. Deemed accordingly as well as well. The act is of is, you could use it for up and coming areas specifically earmarked. For emergency services, but then in addition to that, they, there's other subsets in that, there's not.
Oh, there's definitely, I I'm just, I just had my hat on. I'm trying to stay focused.
Solid. And it'd be, it'd be interesting to see if those end up getting tied to each other, which they might. So like, you can have money in your gateway, but then we're gonna.
Yeah.
And that, that is the reason I wanted.
Other thing here and and invests here, which maybe is good.
That's the reason I wanted to leave this discussion with the connection to the No National Park Movement, to be fair. To the whole, like I usually am, the big picture.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, my mistake. It was the Leni B Nation was gonna designate.
Okay.
A a historical.
What is that thing I was talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so um we recently got confirmation that the, well, let me just give the quick story. Uh in two thousand twenty one, as I was reviewing contracts um and involved in the I eighty project. I could see that the federally recognized Lenape Tribal Nationals, there's three. That's Oklahoma, Oklahoma and Wisconsin. Um they are required to have input on the federal projects. That are occurring in on federal land. Um through that advocacy, they were arguing that you're not considering impacts to the Delaware Water Gap. As a potential. Traditional cultural property. They're called traditional claims, traditional landscape, PCPs. And that is an another. National designation, similar to be in a park, similar to a national trail or Appalachian Trail, similar to the Delaware Water um. The middle Delaware Wild and Seismic River. Those are that separate designation. So they started that conversation in two thousand twenty one. Uh just this month, I did get confirmation that the NJ DOT is. Um preparing a draft application that goes to the nation. The process for designation of that category is in, goes to the National Park Service. So that is going to the National Park Service um to consider the Delaware Water Gap as this traditional cultural property. So how it pertains to us and the resolutions that all most municipalities pass is our our argument was. Well, what about our culture, in our history, you know, the Delaware Water Gap as a national natural landmark? Our our geological wonder and our uh national historic landmark, just for something as simple as transportation. Think the river, logging, all that went down on the river. The reason why we have the resort industry. The Delaware Water Gap, the corridor. Um so we're behind. I I jumped on this earlier this year because we don't mind the delay for eighty. It took them three years. That was kinda fun, but we already started this process. Quietly, we need to just start screaming. We want the same thing considered now because we don't want six eleven to be delayed. In the same manner. So is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I can anticipate with it. If it was designated um by to the tribe, how that might impact the the overall process.
Which process?
The eighty, I guess.
Oh, um uh it require uh the uh. It just requires that the DOT consider impacts. Of that as a national resource, as a traditional, a cultural resource in this way.
There there's no federal recognition, so it it's not the same general type of study or consultation. This is. You know, to be courteous and and, you know, respectful. But not, not by law.
No, they have to listen to.
Yeah, they're required to consider.
Consider.
Their input is considered, just like everybody else.
Right, correct. That's what I'm saying.
They become like a consulting party, right?
Yes, no, they are, they're they're more than a consulting.
Yeah, they're like one of the main ones. They have to be honored, period.
They're in the category as a federal nation, they're in the category of the National Park Service, US Army Corps, DEP. They're 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 called um cooperating agencies. Doesn't mean they cooperate. But there's an agreement of cooperation to go back and forth and deliberate, so um. Yeah, so law requires their input, just like ours as a consulting party.
Yeah.
It's required that the agency consider your input.
Yeah.
Um but they're not required to do what we even collectively have.
Correct, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, have I got there?
Yeah, it's, you're required to listen and to consider and what consider means.
And demonstrate they have, yes.
That you've done some things and then ultimately at the end you can be like, well, we also consider this and.
But we have.
But that slows things down a lot of times.
Uh it can.
I mean, with A D.
Yeah, with A D it did. With six eleven, we're we're doing everything to make sure it doesn't slow it down.
Correct.
Just the opposite.
Then is there still a normal?
Oh, of course. So um uh tunnel bypass bridge, that's how I, alternatives.
Yeah.
The argument with to to starting with the DOT, I mean NJ DOT, uh that project, it was. Easy for everybody to grasp the idea that we don't want them to damage Mount Tammany, the way that they were proposing. And then they added this retaining wall project that is to add a shoulder. Which puts it into the darn near into the river. So now we've changed the entire look from river to up the mountain. For what? And then in the end, they put it all back the way it is. It was easy for people to grasp. Wait a minute. If we kind of agree it's inevitable, we're gonna have some kind of. Mitigation to the S curve disaster. You know, there's gonna be an expansion. Well, wait a minute, the last thing we want is to be on a bridge or in a tunnel or on a bypass. After all that damage was done for more than no good reason. So a big part of this is. They will um through the environmental review process, they are required to consider all reasonable alternatives. They will argue, this is not reasonable. We're talking a few billion dollars for a tunnel, so financially not reasonable, but then what is the alternative? So um. Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good? Okay, you're welcome. I'll save you.
Supervisors, anything y'all wanted to note?
Uh. It's related to Matt and the zoning um. Had a good orientation sessions with him and I think one of the things that. Julian and I discussed, and I think with the other supervisors as well. There's a few ordinances that are in the works that have largely been around. I think in some ways trying to button up enforcement and make it easier and simpler and it remains to be seen whether that. Might be entirely necessary or not, and so um. I for one am am not sort of super feeling the urgency to get a sign ordinance passed, for example. Cause I do wanna make sure that we get full input from um our new zoning officer who has on that one in particular. Has said he will attend, that's the February twenty third meeting, end of February, the next joint session on the on the signage. Um he'll be able to attend and provide some input. He already provided some input saying that. Maybe you don't need to completely rewrite it, and maybe it's just some sections that need to be improved, so just sort of wanna highlight that. From my standpoint, some of these ordinances that are, we're trying to button up from the enforcement side. Might need to take a slight pause and might need to be reworked a little bit.
The aesthetics standards that we're trying to implement and and upgrade. Um from our current ordinances will still be things that we do, but this valued input will make it a lot easier to make sure they can be enforced. Yeah.
Any examples of what ordinances those might be that you're referring to?
I mean. The signs might be, one was the, well, the business ordinance, the transient business ordinance. I mean, that was one that, you know, Robert had looked at and was like, why, you know, why are we doing this? Why? And a lot of times we'd say, why are we doing this? And we didn't really get an answer, so now maybe we'll get a better answer of why things are written the way they are and. There might not be a need to make some adjustments. I think there will still be needs to make adjustments, but I wouldn't wanna go and. Put an ordinance into place right now unless there was a full review by our new um and time and.
Correct.
They need time to get through a lot of backlog, so just sort of highlighting them. I'm not gonna be pushing any, I mean, there's still some ordinances they need to go through, but. Some that are around sort of enforcement issues need to get.
Right, just to be clear, it's really around the enforcement mechanism because we've contemplated removing zoning references from some of these. Because of either struggles with actual enforcement or practical issues with the enforcement, not necessarily personnel. Though sometimes personnel, um so we wanted to make sure that if we don't have to change something, that there is an appropriate mechanism. Existing, we can take advantage of that now.
Awesome. Yeah, truly.
We're excited about that. One of the the tough things that we talked about with Matthew was the transient business ordinance provisions because. We've had lots of food trucks and different things that, you know, it's somewhat of an arduous process to go through the existing ordinance, which still talks about. You know, door to door sales and and less of, you know, the mobile entrepreneur type of thing, so.
And maybe as it relates to a question that was raised about. Um who else gets pulled in from Bureau Veritas? I mean, that that their orientation included um. Matthew's boss and he was chiming in on, oh, your son Jordan's already includes this bit and that bit.
Right.
So there's all, there's gonna be input hopefully coming in um when there are questions that our zoning, our. Allocated zoning officer as an individual doesn't necessarily know, because we've hired a firm, he has the ability to go to. Um other individuals in the firm and seek input.
And they're familiar with our enforcement equipment as it relates to sound as well and and will be when it comes to lighting. They have one of their own, but we also have ours, several. They have one of their own, but we also have ours, so that'll be a good tool to have. So.
That's all my comments.
Yeah, seeing as we just kind of went over the reason why we're gonna table the next item, I'll entertain a motion to table the transient business ordinance provisions.
I'll I'll motion to table.
Motion by Mr. Albert, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Loveenheim, any questions? All in favor? All right, all right. Okay, under our consent agenda, we have a number of items, the consideration to adopt resolution number five eighty six and and five eighty seven, which deal with fire and EMS tax dispersments, deals solely with uh changing reference on the insurance to remove, what was it, the reference to workers' comp? And we also, resolution number five eighty eight, which appoints an independent CPA firm for fiscal year twenty twenty four. We're continuing with our contracted obligation with Riley. Consideration of resolution five eighty nine, which waives the appropriations limitation for EMS tax per Act one forty of twenty twenty four. We're setting our ratio at seventy five percent. Previously, it had been only fifty percent that could be utilized by an ambulance provider for staff. This allows them to go up while also making sure on our end that we're preserving the capital improvement side with that last quarter. Then it's also the consideration for the purchase of EM cuts, plow truck body for the capital improvement budget at ninety nine thousand eight hundred thirty four dollars. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, do I hear a second? I'll start a second, Mr. Albert, questions?
Yeah, okay, so um. Yeah, I I think I understand the Senate five fifty, that's EMS can use more funds for that we're raising and that was a change at the state level.
Correct.
Okay, um and this just allows it, it doesn't mean they have to use.
Yeah, it just gives them the flexibility, makes it easier to reconcile reimbursements, which I know would be helpful.
The other thing, we had talked last year when we adopted the resolutions for the percentage breakdowns for how much everyone's getting, um that was going to have to happen on an annual basis, right? But that's not this, this is just a revision.
Correct, this just changed the reference on the insurance coverage per.
Because it's the same ordinance, it's just, I mean, it's the same resolution.
Correct, this amounts what we passed a couple of weeks ago, but just references.
Do we have, does that mean we have to, because we have to do this annually, does that mean we won't have to do the EMS one in twenty twenty five or?
So we we did that in twenty twenty five at the last meeting in January. Um this, once we sent it to the fire company, is one of them like, hey, you have a one mistake in here, it says workers' comp, it should say general liability insurance.
Okay.
So the percentages haven't changed, nothing else has changed for twenty twenty five, except workers' comp now says general. Workers' comp is handled for another funding.
Um and then uh tell me about the uh plow truck.
Uh this is the body for the plow truck that you would have um discussed and approved at the last meeting. Um this will be for the full fed out of the snowplow that Chris needs. Uh we have two aging snowplows, um one of them we just simply can't find parts for anymore and we are planning to sell it on municipal to help recover costs.
But this is, so we already approved.
You approved the chassis of it, the bottom, this is the top part of it.
Correct. Okay.
And yes, this might seem ridiculously expensive when you add up all of the numbers, um but two hundred and forty thousand for a dump truck is regular.
It's a dump truck, it's big, but it's not like a.
And it's per the.
No, not.
No, and it's per the state contract uh from Co-Stars with collective bidding.
Oh, okay. That's all my questions.
Yeah, this, I think.
The um uh resolution five eighty nine.
Yes.
Michael, that was the first one you've talked about, right?
Well, I was asking all eighty six, eighty seven, they're all, sorry, eighty six and eighty seven is what I was asking about.
Okay, sorry.
And and eighty nine, I'm sorry, I just wasn't asking.
They they are um linked, but not the same.
Right, so on five eighty nine, that's my question.
Yes.
This, did the state of Pennsylvania uh change the dispersment or the the, you know, the the percentage of allowable use?
So it allows us to waive it, so it could be any number or no number, so.
So what is the state's limit?
So, well, there is no longer a state limit, so previously it was fifty percent could be used for staff.
So then the state said, forget it.
There's no limit, you have to still have to waive it, though.
Right.
Still have to make a.
So we can keep that, you know, essentially the vestigial part of the statute that said fifty percent, or we could go over and above.
But not below.
Essentially.
It's Act one thirty nine, which was effective January first of twenty.
Ours is Act one forty.
Oh, apologies.
Yeah.
There's three versions, so so Pennsylvania has a funny thing called a single subject rule. So uh essentially, there's three pieces of legislation, one for first-class townships, one for second-class townships, and then those for, I think, boroughs or cities.
So one forty is the.
Yes.
Two, so do you know what the other, what our what our surrounding municipalities have done with that, have they?
I believe we're the first ones to take it up, but they are essentially going to be following what we're doing. At least the ones that we share funding with, I mean, it's really only been.
Middle Smithfield, yeah.
Yeah.
It's water gap.
And if Middle Smith is gonna go seventy five, well.
I believe so, they were waiting for us to make our action.
Right. Can I?
Go ahead, Debbie.
Part of the, part of the problem is that uh seventy four percent, like the school district, seventy four percent of the budget is personnel, because you can't AI people to the hospital. Um and also I can only buy so many bottles of whiteout to try and make fifty percent. Part of the issue is that unless you're going to just go out and buy things, I I was copying whiteout to to be able to meet fifty percent, my biggest expense is paying people. So rather than buy things we don't need just to build up that number, we asked, could you remove that? And Rosemary took it to the legislature and they changed it so it could go up to a hundred percent, seeing as the people are the pretty much the integral part of doing the mess.
I believe, I believe Rosemary's on the on the local township committee, right?
She was, now she's on a different, uh it's on the Community Recreational Development Committee.
Okay.
But, so I thank you.
Yeah, well, we're happy to be supportive and we're happy that that legislation passed because this was pretty difficult, better than before, but still difficult.
But she said it was beyond twenty years before they had said, you know, put that requirement on, so she said that's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, pretty much unanimous to support, uh support to change it too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any more? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Cool, next item is the consideration for the match commitment letter for the one for nature grant application, which resurfaces uh with more stone, about four thousand linear feet at Menaseng Park. Um this is a one-to-one match that involves our uh Public Works crew actually completing the work. Julie, is there anything I'm missing?
Um only thing of note with this is we did consult with Monroe County Conservation District um and we are doing the pieces that we are doing to avoid taking any action in the floodway.
Right.
So we still need an EMS plan, um Alex spoke with them, he's going to handle that internal, so no additional burden for you guys. Um but we don't need to go after permits or anything like that because we are not making any changes to.
So uh sorry, this is first I've seen any of this, um I'm at, so that's my email. Uh is this new trail or just 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 cleaning out the existing trail?
This is the existing trail that we already have, this is laying down new stone.
Yeah, it hasn't been resurfaced, at Menaseng Park.
The one closest to eighty, it goes to the stepping stones.
Yeah.
Um and then it looks like it's also on the other side a little bit.
Yeah, about half of the linear length on on the other side.
The one that's close right next to the train track.
To the small field.
To.
The small side.
Both sides, it's on both sides of the train track.
Right. Okay.
It's existing, right?
Yes, it just hasn't.
And then the dotted part remained of the pathway not to be resurfaced, so they're not gonna do anything on the um.
On the furthest side.
On the side by the by the.
By the water.
By the water.
Do I hear a motion of the?
Sorry, I'm, oh, oh, yes, we should have done that first, motion to uh prove the commitment letter.
Motion of Mr. Albert, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Loveenheim.
A self.
Discussion, sorry. Good.
Killing Robert's rules here.
All right.
Uh no, we're not voting yet.
Almost.
Um how much is the total budget, do you know?
Um if I remember, including the match that we're expecting to uh have in our PPW funds with manual labor, we're looking at about five thousand dollars in total cost.
And ours is fifteen hundred, does that fifteen hundred include the manual labor or is that just cash?
Uh I believe the commitment letter says fifteen hundred dollars in cash and in manual labor.
And in cash, okay.
Yeah.
Um this is within the regular maintenance budget, so this isn't any additional expenses that we weren't already planning on spending on.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? All right, all right.
All right.
Public comments? All right, Margaret.
Um two more rights to that handed.
And I just have um one question and reference to um I guess where Frisbee Park is. Um apparently that area is listed and on the park site as a geocache area for people, but nothing during any of our meetings in reference to the bike park was mentioned. Now, why did I go online and find this, but yet nothing was mentioned?
Mentioned where?
Yeah, where did you find it?
No, sorry, my my question is, what do you mean it wasn't mentioned, it wasn't mentioned in the meetings around the the future park?
Right, it wasn't mentioned at all for the bike park um for the Frisbee Park, or any of the survey information, or anything that we sat in with John in reference to the master plan of what was suggested. But yet you go on the computer under the park system for Monroe County and it is listed.
As a geosite?
As a geosite.
What? I don't know the answer, I'm just gonna say.
That one?
All.
That one.
I was gonna say, everything that's been discussed is about planning for what to be done about the park, so I would assume, I don't know the answer, that no one is suggesting you stay that, but I don't know.
What site is that, Christine?
Uh it's Monroe County PA dot gov, it's the Monroe County Forever Green Geocaching Challenge.
Does that mean that you find Pokemon there? I'm just, I'm, is that what you're caching?
No, no. So this, this came about these twenty years ago, um where you you use coordinates to hike and get out in nature and you find little treasure troves and, you know, you find like a.
Okay, not Pokemon.
No, you'll find like a, you know, like a little figurine, um you know.
I've seen those videos, where is it, yeah.
Yeah.
In a box and.
I don't know.
Sometimes it's an exchange and.
Put something in to leave for somebody else.
Do you have something about the geol?
Uh I'm looking it up right now, um.
Somebody has to know, got on there.
You can win a.
Well, it's Monroe County, so I'm just, that's why I'm asking, I don't know.
Thanks for making us aware, uh we'll make Missy aware and we'll look into it.
Yep.
There's a Facebook page too, Monroe County Park Locator.
Yeah, on Facebook.
And I just also want to address um recently the hunters that have been down in our area by the bike park, park, walking in, there were several calls that I made and I found out from my father that the two hunters that I called down on the Friday slept there.
This is in on the on.
In front of my parents.
So on parkland?
Yeah.
Do we allow hunting in the township parks? I don't think they.
Yeah, you're you're not allowed to hunt in the township parks, the perennial problem that we have their vet site is that it is directed to the federal land and hunters are allowed on park in our um eh eh at River's Edge or Menaseng, admittedly not at night. Um but they are allowed to take their equipment and walk through to the federal land. Um we've called, uh when you spoke with Chris, um we called the state police and said, hey, this is what's going on and they said it's federal land, they're they're allowed to be there. Um and because our park is a public park, they are allowed to walk through our public park. As for sleeping there, nobody should be in our parks overnight.
Don't you think if uh people are in your park, that that makes it um definitely a hazard with them hunting? I can tell you, my house has been hit twice. And it's been reported to the state police twice.
Good, that's who you should be.
Correct.
Um.
Should be reported to the game commission too, shouldn't they?
Yeah.
They're not supposed to.
Yeah, there is a distance away from a domicile.
Hundred fifty feet.
They violate that.
Correct, yeah, um were they, you think they're sleep, they're sleeping on township property or they sleeping on on the federal property? I don't I don't know if either is allowed, but I don't, we don't have.
You can a hundred percent sleep on federal.
You know.
Parkland.
They were right in front, well, I can see them out of my parents, you can see them, but they're in, that that's probably the river park.
The park, hard, like the township park?
No, the river park in front of my parents.
Okay.
In the island right there. But they walked through to get there.
Right.
Like I said, that's a flashlight to see if.
Yeah.
Any more? Any other comment? Do I hear a motion?
Motion should do a jury.
Second, Mr. Loveenheim, second, Mr. Albert, all in favor? All right, okay, thank you, everybody.